All right, if everybody's ready, we'll call the meeting to order, please, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Rule call, Mr. Lombard?
Allam.
Yes.
Odie? Saxor? Telkot?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes, sir.
All right. If there is nothing to be added to the agenda, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. No conflict of interest disclosure or waiver requests tonight. That takes us to approval of the regular meeting minutes from October 12th and October 26th. I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. And there is no community input scheduled for our agenda tonight, so that takes us to financial items, bills and claims. Mr. Lombard.
Any questions from the board? The total of $1.8 million of invoices submitted for your review, of which $1.2 million was to Pesca Construction for a Spur Elementary payment. There was also, I had noted on page six, High Point Networks, 250 laptops that were purchased out of COVID money in the federal government. One other one I had noted was the Sioux Falls School District Career Academy payment number $153,000 for, as half of the 40 slots for the CTE program. That's all I had noted unless some of the board members would have some questions. It's $69,000 of pay vouchers. Included in that $69,000 was approximately $13,000 of summer high school marching band assistance, $136,745 of food service bills.
If there are no questions on the bills and claims, I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please.
So moved.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Financial report, Mr. Lombard.
Okay, on the cash report for the month of October, we had just under $20 million, $19.8 million coming in. We had $2,694,000 of receipts and $5,352,000 of dispersments. Left a total of $17,130,000 of cash, of which $4,581,000 was in the general fund, $1.4 million in the capital fund, 227 in the special education fund, $115,000 in the bond redemption fund, $23,000 in our enterprise fund, and $10.7 million in the capital projects fund. I did want to point out that this is probably the low of our cash flow at the district at the end of October, which puts it $4.5 million, which is about 15% of our total budget. State law says that we have to remain under 20%, which 20% would be about $6 million. So we're well under that. $2,694,000 is itemized on the next two pages. I did have one item circled there about in the middle of the page, Cal State Electronics, $98,000. That's the second half, second and final half of the payment for the high school MacBook program sellback. I think it averaged that we got about $350 per unit back, a total of $407,000. Investment report follows, $9.5 million. Payroll report for the month of October, $2,508,000. Our normal payroll for each month this year will be just over $2,000,000. $2,500,000, $2,600,000 would be a normal payroll. This year, this month, we had the COVID stipend in there, $425,000, and extra principal days for the summer of another $25,000. So that's what it accounted for, the difference there. Financial statements, the revenue. Revenue shows in each fund a little bit stronger than the same period last time. Property taxes come in a little bit more than they did at the same time last year. Nothing significant. Expenditure reports, the general fund shows a total expended at 34.7% versus 33.7% last year. The difference would be, once again, the COVID stipend of $450,000. Capital fund, 60% expended. Same with the special education fund, about 1% more than it was at this time last year. Bond redemption fund equivalent. Food service. Food service is going to be a strange animal this year with no... What you see there today on the right-hand column, the sales to pupils of $60,000, that's what you'll see at the end of the year. No more sales to pupils. It's all going to be funded by reimbursement from the federal government. All meals are free until the end of the year. So there's going to be a huge federal reimbursement number in the financial statements there and a very small sales to pupil. Actually, financially, it will be better off for the department. The federal government pays us better than the parents pay us, I guess you might say.
They don't bounce there yet?
Yeah. So that'll be a positive for the food service fund. Trust and agency fund showed $233,000 of amounts held for others. And then the capital projects fund, $7 million of the $18.7 million expended year-to-date. Entertain any questions?
Question on the food. Obviously, the meals are pretty correct, but there is still charge if they...
Get extras.
Get extras, so is that...
That'll be reflected in the line item that's labeled "à la carte."
Oh, yes.
So that number will fluctuate throughout the year. And, but the actual sales per pupil, and they have to still pay for their milk each day, too.
Thank you.
Because of the high price of milk. I figured somebody would chime in on that certain layup that I gave them.
Hey, Paul, can we talk just briefly? Okay, so the sale of the computers, that's about or as or better than was advertised to us maybe when we first bought that set of computers that...
It's better than...
We'd probably get about a year or, you know, we're paying four payments over four years. About one of those payments is going to be paid for by now. Oh, sorry.
So, you know, with that, we actually did a little bit better. So we're paying, so the money that we, is going to cover at least a quarter. I mean, because we had to purchase more this time because of enrollment increase or whatever, so...
And last year, I think our payment was right at $400,000, so we got $407,000 back. So one of the four years is...
Yeah, it was kind of the hope going in, I think.
Yeah. Yes, that is accurate.
Okay.
Any other questions?
All right. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the financial report as presented tonight.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next, we have administration reports. The administrative center superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a few things for you here this evening. Our elementary school construction timeline, timeline Pesca reports that that remains on time. Would note that interior, exterior masonry, all of that precast is in progress. They're beginning to put roof decking and roof joists and those types of things on. If you travel down, you can see that some of that has become enclosed. I think their ultimate goal is for the building project to be enclosed by the middle of January, so they're able to work inside throughout winter. Our naming facilities committee will meet on November 12th. Hopefully, we have a formalized recommendation regarding a name to you by the end of November. Our elementary boundary line committee process has been completed and will be providing you a formalized report and recommendation based on that committee's work here later this evening. And then we certainly have planned to have that building open in the fall of '21. Just an update on staffing. We have posted the general positions for all of our current staff to request an internal transfer for if they would like to go to the new building. That was posted in October and administratively, we've outlined a process for folks to submit their internal application, and we hope to have those transfers processed by January. And then, of course, that plays into new staffing that we will have in terms of new staff in the district or additional positions in the district with the addition of the new building as well as other needs throughout the district. I would tell you, I'm very excited about the number of internal transfer requests that we've received, and I think we're going to be in a great position in terms of staffing that building out with seasoned and experienced Brandon Valley staff. So it's always good to develop that climate and culture within that building with folks that know our protocols and our procedures and have the ability to hit the ground running regarding climate and culture in that building. Wednesday, December 9th, please mark that. That's our tentative district legislative breakfast. Now that the election process has been completed, we will be confirming the availability of that date with our elected representatives. Elementary staff laptop update, just a high-level update. Business manager Lundberg obviously reported on the purchase of those laptops, approximately $194,000, which will equip all elementary teaching staff, certified teaching staff, with a laptop computer. Estimated distribution is prior to the winter break. So hope to have those kicked out here before the winter break. Obviously, there's imaging and some tech things that have to occur between the delivery date and the distribution date, but that's our ultimate goal is to get them out before we leave for the winter break. Delegate assembly, associated school boards will hold their delegate assembly here later in November. We are represented by Ms. Saxor. She serves as our city affairs and legislation committee chair, as well as she's a member of the executive board for associated school boards. So that's a key event in terms of school boards across the state as we develop our approach to the upcoming legislative session as a whole. I would let you know that the academic school year for calendar for next year is in the initial phases as far as development goes. Work through our administrative council, teacher liaison council, and classified council. Hope to bring to you an initial calendar at our first meeting in January and then have formal adoption later in January, so we can communicate that out to our respective families. The most interesting call I've received regarding the 2021-22 academic calendar was a parent from Illinois who has a senior that's graduating in 2022, and they're trying to get a wedding scheduled as well as a graduation scheduled. So she wanted to know the graduation date. Third Sunday in May? I said if it changes from that, I'll give you a personal call, but I wouldn't plan on it. So it's really important that we get that information out to families in as timely a manner as possible because they certainly use it for their planning purposes. And then just a few calendar updates that I just want to, want to note. No school as we honor our veterans on November 11th. And then our Thanksgiving break is scheduled for Wednesday through Friday, November 25th to 27th. Our winter break begins on Wednesday, December 23rd with a two-hour early dismissal. Our winter break runs from December 24th through January 3rd with school resuming on Monday, January 4th. With that, I would certainly entertain any questions you have. One other item I had, I wanted to note, our retired Brandon Valley School District staff luncheon. It's typically held the first week in December. That's been a longstanding tradition, as I understand it. You, the Board of Education, supply our retired staff members within the area a meal of food, and then we also have our chamber choir sing for those folks and provide them that opportunity. It's a tremendous event. Certainly appreciate the board's support of that event. I think it's been very helpful for us as we move school initiatives through the processes and the adoption processes that we have. Obviously, with COVID, that presents a bit of a challenge or an issue. I've been working with Bill Miller on that event in and of itself, and we are going to host or have the event, but it will look and feel and be different. We will be providing our retired staff with a meal. It'll be a carryout or a grab-and-go or something through, from a local, from a local business. And then in addition to that, we'll provide a paper copy newsletter to update them on the current status of the school district. And we're also going to see if we can work something out virtually in terms of having a program of some sort through Alliance and our cable television channel. So that is in progress. I just want to note that it's such a wonderful event, we didn't want to lose it. We wanted to still have it and say thank you for the foundational programming that those folks all provided, and we build our success upon those retirees. So powerful event. Just wanted to give you an update that it's going to happen, but it will look a little different. Certainly with that, would entertain any questions that you have.
No questions. Were you going to do the school improvement plan also?
School improvement plans were disseminated. I will tell you that they are a skeleton of what they typically would be because of the loss of the state assessment data. We'll talk a little bit about that in the 2020 State of the Schools address as well. But they have been provided to you. The web link has been provided to you. All school improvement plans have been posted on our website. It's an annual process that we utilize. In addition to that annual process, it's a component of our federal funding and our title fund application process.
Thank you. Mr. Lombard, anything else tonight? Thank you. Mr. Schluckaway or Mr. Farquine?
They're selling tickets for the state football championship to our students, so that's where our high school administrators are at the moment.
Thank you. Mr. Thorson?
Sure. Just one quick thing I would like to bring to your attention. We are going ahead with our middle school play. We have over 80 kids this year involved. I would like to say a big thank you to the two advisors, Jody Ackerman and Sharon Schwebach. They've had to have some flexibility and do some adaptations to that play because of COVID, but they've done a wonderful job. Our kids are excited. I believe it's November 19th. I'll get you an actual date on that. But they're excited. Like I said, we have 80 kids that are participating in that. So that's a phenomenal piece to give our kids that opportunity to perform. And it will be different, obviously, than in the past, but the kids are excited. Our advisors are excited. So I just want to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Skipstead, anything tonight? Mr. Pearson? Mr. Bab? Mrs. Hockcamp? Mrs. Palmer? All right. Mrs. Nelson, anything tonight? That takes care of everybody. No board policy, so that takes us to general business item number one, State of the Schools address.
All right, very good. Thank you for the opportunity. Just want to provide you an update on a variety of things, specifically the accountability report card or lack thereof. Spring 2020 distance learning report card. I'm just going to want to provide you with an example of the data and the information that we put out for our community on that. Provide a quick facilities update and then also just review and/or touch on our district-wide strategic plan. So in a normal year, these would be the components of the school performance index. Again, would note that a wide variety of those are not available because of the lack of the assessment in the spring. Within all of the report cards that are provided on the South Dakota Department of Education webpage, if you were to go look at that respective webpage, you would see the following phrase listed on each respective school's report card. And then many of the data areas just simply say, "No data provided due to COVID-19." So that's just an FYI for it. One piece of data that we do have available to us that we report on annually is the average ACT scores that we have, not only in Brandon Valley, but also in South Dakota and in the United States. So this is an overview of ACT data within our country, our state, and in the Brandon Valley School District. So would just note that our composite score, 1.4 points higher than the state average. So obviously, good information, obviously speaks volumes to the work done by all educators in the Brandon Valley School District. I would tell you that you've heard me say it before and I'll say it again. Obviously, our proficiency levels of reading at our elementary are critical to our success ongoing throughout our schools. So this is, when we look at the success of our kids, it reflects upon all various levels of our school district. So those would be the 2020 average ACT scores across the state. It did tick up, so overall, positive stuff. The other piece of data that I would specifically point to are graduation rate and completion rate. So four-year cohort graduation, what that is, is ultimately on-time graduation. So that's a kiddo that enters school, spends four years, graduates. And then the high school completion is an individual that takes longer than the four years with their respective cohort. And you can see we're running at about 98% graduation and completion rate. And then in the state of South Dakota, which is the yellow bar, you can see that the graduation rate in the state of South Dakota is running about 84% and high school completion in the state of South Dakota is running at 93%. So obviously, with a limited amount of achievement data, I guess I wanted to just draw upon the spring closure that we worked through and went through. And just wanted to say that our image here, when we say we prepare for our future together, truer words have never been spoken. It takes absolutely every single one of us, ourselves, our kids, our parents, and our community to have the academic success that we do. And the spring closure is obviously a testament to that. So I did want to pull an example for you. I'm not going to go through all of them specifically. You certainly have the ability to do that. I believe last spring, I provided you with an update and said that it was out there if you wanted to take a look at it. But ultimately, what this is, is this is closure data that is available on our COVID-19 website for what transpired last spring when we closed. We felt like it was extremely important, and in the Brandon Valley School District, we take great pride on reporting and being accountable to our community for the academic achievement that we have. So this ultimately outlines, we put in ELA math, social studies, and science. Those are the respective core content areas. And then we listed the percentage of students that were engaged. And then we had to define how they passed or received grades. So we have pass with distinction, pass incomplete, and then ultimately, total assignments completed. So you can find this respective information for all of our grades, grades K through 12, on our distance learning report card webpage, which is on our COVID-19 information page. So again, I think that it'll be important for us to have this information, depending on what type of accountability is necessary for last spring. You know, Department of Ed, they were trying to figure out exactly how to monitor attendance and do those types of things, and we felt compelled administratively to make certain that we measured our success and tracked that for accountability purposes. So would certainly point you to that distance learning report card for more information on all the various levels. Facilities update, just want to provide you with a high-level overview. You obviously will see more of this information when we get into the five-year plan presentations later this winter. But ultimately, Brandon Elementary, 615 students onsite at Brandon Elementary. There are 581 junior kindergarten through fourth grade students at Brandon Elementary. So you can see there's 34 junior K kiddos at Brandon Elementary. Fred Assam Elementary, 575 students. I would remind you that I think it was about a year ago, we had 525 students there. And when we look at Fred Assam's capacity right now, they have that many and maybe a few more in distance learning. So the decision to build the school where we're building it makes perfect sense and is aligned with our respective growth. Robert Benas Elementary, want to point this out specifically, especially when we get to the five-year plan. It'll take a little bit of dissecting to really pull them out of there. But ultimately, Robert Benas is listed at 662 students. They do not have 662 students onsite. 135 of those 662 students are enrolled in our distance learning program. Long story short, when we developed our distance learning approach, we had to put them somewhere, ultimately house them in a school building for the sake of tracking. So ultimately, what we have is, we have a kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth grade classroom that are, have a teacher in Robert Benas Elementary with kids in them, but they're not physically located there. But they are housed out of Robert Benas Elementary within our computer software system. So that's just an item to note. Those 135 students come from every building. So there's kids and kiddos that would have been in Brandon Elementary that are listed in that 135 students, as well as Fred Assam and Valley Springs. You can see Valley Springs Elementary is at 97 students. Our intermediate school is at 705. Wanted to note, they have 40 students engaged in distance learning or the distance learning program. Middle school has 704 students. They have 67 students currently engaged in our distance learning program. And then our high school, our high school number is 1,343. But again, we have to pull out 20, there's 24 students at our Teach Well Academy. So those individuals are included in that number, but not physically onsite. They're on a different site. And then 130 students out of that 1,343 are not onsite as they're distance learning students. So as you look at those numbers, great news, we have capacity for our students as well as our future growth. The one item that I would draw your attention to in terms of Robert Benas, and it doesn't show up as nicely here because I have the distance learners in there. A mechanism or a strategy to manage our capacity at Robert Benas Elementary will be the junior kindergarten section. We will move junior kindergarten out of Robert Benas Elementary and position that section at Brandon Elementary where we have physical capacity for it. And then it ultimately opens up another classroom for increased student enrollment at Robert Benas Elementary as they continue to grow. When you look at BV Vision 2040 and where do we build next? Obviously, Robert Benas Elementary, as the capacity grows, that's where we get to our East Side Elementary and the conversation about that. But as we manage our affairs in a fiscally responsible manner, we want to make certain that we're cognizant of our taxpayer dollars, et cetera, and space those building projects out accordingly. So that's where we manage our capacity by pulling a section of JK out, putting that teacher in that classroom at Brandon Elementary, freeing up space for another 30 students or so. Whoops. Then the only other item that I would note is, as we look at our high school and we talk about capacity, we're constantly evaluating BV Vision 2040. Dr. Telkot will certainly speak to it at a very high level, but we've begun preliminary, high-level conversations about, in addition at the high school, and what that may or may not look like and what our priorities are and those types of things. But again, extremely early in the process, high-level preliminary planning because obviously, we have room for all the kids that we will see over the course of the next few years. Any questions on facilities?
Yeah, Jared, I have a question. I'm just curious. What do we think we'll go for next year? Do you have any feel like we're going to continue to offer the distance learning option?
Yeah.
Or some family, you know what?
Yeah.
Because it might be tying us in, for instance, even to like some homeschool families who say, "This works for us. We want to grab a piece of this." We have some families who say, "You know, we really like this option. We want to keep that option." And some of our high school kids might look at that and go, "Hey, I can work on it and do this thing," or whatever. It is our plan to continue to offer a distance learning option if the world gets back to...
So I would say, at this point in time, it would be our intent to utilize a distance learning program or distance learning academy for next year. I think we'll utilize some CARES funds that we have available specifically for elementary distance learning programming. And then the intermediate, middle school through high school distance learning program is going to be something that we, again, will offer. However, we may have to do it in a different way because we need teacher. Right now, we have teacher facilitators at all levels. And if we need to pull them back into the classroom to have another section of high school, social studies, et cetera, we need to find a way to facilitate our upper-level distance learning program without pulling teachers out of the classroom and assigning them to that. Long story short, yes. For next year, I fully intend to continue to offer a distance learning program. I think we're probably in a position where we will need to begin to consider having a distance learning academy. I will tell you that I would put our elementary distance learning program up against any. And I think that we're going to, I think we're going to find that there are going to be some folks who really like that option, that platform, the availability of that. And it's of good quality. So as our core operating principal states, we're in the business of creating learning environments that result in success. If that is an environment for success for some kiddos, I believe that we'll have to consider operating that. Exactly how it looks is to be determined.
Yeah, it's just, you know, as we start talking about capacity, that maybe lets us stretch capacity. Maybe another year for a building or something like that, you know? Who knows?
Absolutely. All right, the last item I want to do is just touch base and provide an update on our strategic plan. Five core components of our strategic plan, student achievement, staff development, facilities and operations, fiscal responsibility, and parent-community relations. So student achievement, our reading protocol is, has been, and will continue to be an emphasis. And I think it's going to become even more important as we grow and we add elementary buildings. Our reading protocol will be key as our growth occurs. District data usage, obviously, this year, without the state assessment data, we're relying heavily on the data points that we have from district-created assessments and district programming assessments. And then I would just point to our distance learning program as far as student achievement goes. We have families in a situation right now where they're not able to be onsite. And we wanted to provide them with not only an opportunity, but a great opportunity to continue in their learning process. And I think that certainly met the component of student achievement within our strategic plan. Obviously, character development, a huge component of what we do. Challenge Day, Unity Day, our character program, the Link's Way, the tradition of giving that is so firmly embedded in the Brandon Valley School District, and then obviously, building-level strategies that are utilized at each of the respective buildings through our character programming. Staff development, technology PD in relation to COVID-19. I mean, COVID-19 has obviously taken up a lot of our time and been an emphasis on a lot of the things that we had to do throughout this year. So we had to be responsive with our technology PD throughout our professional development plan. I would note, in-service, the calendar. When we talk about being responsive to professional needs, we're going to tweak January 18th just a little bit. It's scheduled to be a full in-service day. Director Nelson has conducted a survey with staff on needs, et cetera. One of the big needs that our staff is currently expressing is more time, additional time to implement and utilize the technology that they're being asked to work with, et cetera. So our in-service on January 18th, the morning, we will spend one or two hours on, quite frankly, a very, very positive, uplifting, feel-good, professional development experience for our staff. It's a secret right now. I can't say anymore, other than really excited about the project that we're working on. But I can promise that it won't be additional tasks for people, but they'll end up with a lot of work time on the 18th. So that's just another example of how we provide and support our teachers, leaders, and staff. Obviously, building-level student data usage is critically important when we look at our reading protocol, when we look at our interventions and the way in which we do that, progress monitoring, et cetera. Very, very important. Had the opportunity to have a very brief conversation with a building-level administrator that's relatively new to us, and I just, you know, "How are things going? What do you think?" And the thing that they noted is, they said, "I'm extremely impressed with how diligent and how much of an emphasis there is in reading and progress monitoring and making certain that we are teaching those fundamental skills." So when I heard that, that made me feel good, like our reading protocol was certainly being adhered to in a general basis. Work environment, the challenge to create a great work environment. BV Listens, our staff survey. And then top quality compensation. Was able to share with Business Manager Lundberg a spreadsheet today that came out of the School Finance Accountability Board. I'm no longer on that board. I stepped away from that responsibility. But I shared that public document with him. And I will tell you that we are at the top of the list. And it's extremely powerful to see how we have moved teacher compensation over the course of the last three years since the Blue Ribbon Task Force. So hats off to you as a board, Business Manager Lundberg, for the work you guys do on compensation. Facilities and operations, again, our annual budget allocations, five-year plans. BV Vision 2040 is a critical item for individuals that wonder how we're going to manage student growth, or are you going to have two high schools? Those types of questions are easily addressed when you look at BV Vision 2040, which ultimately outlines what we look like in the year 2040 when we have about 7,600 kids or so. Growth management, again, as a growing school district, all items that we work very hard at. Our Boundary Line Committee, more specifically, our Facility Review Committee is a critical piece of what we do and how we do it. Again, you won't see that group convene back together until we get to a point where we need to make a decision on a middle school and an approach for a middle school. We utilize enrollment triggers regarding when we hit the trigger. That's when we start the conversation to build, which would be the preliminary conversations that we have around the high school. Hit the trigger, begin the preliminary conversations. So utilization of enrollment triggers is really critical to our growth management. Five-year plans, BV Vision 2040. Fiscal responsibility, obviously, you guys know that we practice effective, efficient, and sustainable business practices. Our annual budget process, annual audit, growth projections, five-year plan, all of those types of items. Fund balances, obviously, a critical component of what we do. Would just reference the information that Business Manager Lundberg previously shared regarding our fund balance being at approximately 15%. Our strategic plan outlines 15% is where we want our fund balances to be. That's why we have the conversation about special education, where that balance is and the dollars that we have available in that fund balance. So that's why we reference back that 15%. Obviously, we don't want an inflated fund balance because we can put those dollars to use. Business Manager Lundberg has said it many times, and I would echo it. The dollars that we have are to be put to use for educating kids. So that's why you don't sit on those. But we also have to cash flow and operate in a responsible manner. So with that, last one I would share is parent-community relations. Building parent-teacher conference strategies. This year, parent-teacher conferences looked different. It's been fascinating to hear some of the feedback that we've gotten from not only parents but also staff about maybe the virtual option is something that we need to consider moving forward. There was some positive feedback regarding that. And then the various other ways that we engage with our parents. Internship development was something that we worked very, very hard at over the course of the last few years. And I feel like the groundwork and the foundation was just getting established. And then we started to deal with the fact that businesses weren't allowing interns to come to them, that we weren't sending them out. So there's been what I would call a pause in our internship development. And then obviously, our second semester career fair, where we have local businesses come in, kids take a look at summer opportunities and potential careers with them as well. So beyond that, want to be cognizant of your time, but would certainly be willing to answer any questions that you have. Go from there.
Everybody's pretty quiet tonight. All right, thank you Superintendent Larson. That takes us to our second item under General Business, to approve the 2021-2022 Elementary Boundary Line Recommendation.
All right, very good. So we began this process here earlier this fall. Just want to provide you with the formalized recommendation and an overview of kind of where we landed. Would note, and I have noted this prior to, the ways in which we conducted prior research, planning, and preparation. So we collaborate with our municipalities, meet with them annually, review and meet growth plans, infrastructure plans, and then also discuss their long-range development plans and land use plans. We communicate with developers on the timeline of projects and new projects that they have coming. We pay very close attention to infrastructure and development site tours. Veterans Parkway, for example, hopeful that that's open here in the coming months, December or January. So if you got to get out to Interstate 90, you can get out there real quick in the very near future. And then obviously, the 2018 Facility Review Committee was instrumental in the preparation for this boundary line decision. So again, process began earlier this fall. In September, we conducted committee meetings. Each of our respective elementaries were represented by parent representatives. In addition to parents, staff and administration were also involved in that process. Attended and met with the Fred Assam PTA. School Board Transportation Committee was directly involved. You as a board have received this information a couple of times. So I apologize if it's repetitive, but want to make certain that we are operating in a very clear and transparent manner. The informational meeting was held in October. Appreciate those individuals that came, had questions. So here we are, after a formal approval of the boundary lines. I would tell you that we will assemble all of the information of those families within the Brandon Valley School District that are impacted. And they will receive a postal letter outlining that their impact, the timeline, the process, all of the information necessary for them moving forward. And then there will be a deadline for them to communicate with us as we begin to staff out our respective schools. So all of that will be outlined in the letter that families receive in December. So when we began our process, we met with our Boundary Line Committee and ultimately asked them to do really two things specifically. Develop elementary boundary lines for next school year with the addition of our new elementary school. And then also develop a long-range boundary line concept for BV Vision 2040. That's really powerful in the fact that it really puts some detail to the long-range plan that we have for the Brandon Valley School District. We asked the committee to operate with the following objectives in mind. Minimize student impact, proactively manage student growth, and establish boundaries aligned to future growth. Critical to note that anytime you have a boundary change, there will be an impact of students. I mean, it's impossible, it's impossible to say that there will not be. However, we wanted to minimize student impact to the degree that we could. So as we work through our processes, ultimately, and this is very much the same as the facility review process, we work to build consensus, to find consensus within the group. So the committee consensus questions that were asked of our Elementary Boundary Line Committee were as follows. And I would note, all of the consensus questions were supported 11-0 by the committee. Can we agree the proposed elementary boundary lines proactively manage student growth? Can we agree the proposed elementary boundary lines align to future growth of the district? Can we agree that the strategies established to navigate enrollments impacted by the boundary line change work to minimize student impact? Can we agree that the proposed BV Vision 2040 boundary lines develop a long-range boundary concept that will proactively manage student growth? Can we agree the BV Vision 2040 boundary lines align to the future growth of the district? So those ultimately were the questions that we needed the group collectively as a whole to agree to. They all did, so that's where we bring forward to you the recommendation that we do. Prior to sharing the recommended boundary lines, there are a few key items that we want to note when we talk about navigating students that are impacted by the boundary change. So all 3rd grade students are eligible to remain at their current attendance center. They are subject to the in-district open enrollment transportation policy, which means no transportation services are provided. 3rd grade families that want to stay in their current attendance center have to just tell us. Basically, there's a document at the bottom of the letter that we send. Basically, they check, "Yes, we want to stay," so that we can count them in our numbers and we know that they have to stay. That is the extent of what they have to do. They just have to inform us that they intend to stay so we can manage our student class sizes and numbers. All other current elementary students may submit an in-district open enrollment application. Again, subject to in-district open enrollment transportation policy, those students aren't eligible for transportation services. They're subject to in-district open enrollment policy or classroom capacity. I will tell you that we will work as extremely hard to make certain that families that are currently in those facilities can stay in those facilities. Especially if they have a 3rd grade student and they have a younger sibling and they want them both to stay. We will do absolutely everything we can to manage our requests and accommodate those requests, understanding that they are subject to the in-district open enrollment transportation policy. So the last item that I would really want to update you on before we take a look at the recommended boundary lines, the English Language Learner Program. We will operate two elementary EL programs. I have met with administration as well as the EL staff on this topic. And when we get to the boundary line looks, I can explain more of a rationale on why. But staffing for the English Language Learner Program will be provided at Brandon Elementary and at the new elementary school located at 3401 South Sparta. Programming is aligned to the neighborhood school concept. So I'm going to reference something that has transpired over the course of the last couple of years. When we altered the Fred Assam boundary line previously, and we took what I'm going to call the northwest corner of the school district off of Fred Assam and put it into the Brandon Elementary Attendance Center, what we did is we had our English Language Learners from that neighborhood, they were assigned to Fred Assam, provided transportation, and that was where their attendance center was located. We had families that declined services because they wanted to maintain or stay with their neighborhood elementary concept because they wanted to go with their friend to school as opposed to where the EL support services were. So what we had is, we had children that weren't getting the supports necessary because the family was declining to go to that building, but rather wanted the neighborhood... family was declining to go to that building, but rather wanted the neighborhood concept and approach. So that's really one of the biggest reasons why we are moving to two EL programs. The second item is it reduces the likelihood of families declining services. And then the third item is it eliminates transportation issues associated with moving students out of their assigned elementary boundaries. So right now, with the proposed boundary line change that we have, generally speaking, I would say there are two areas within our district that have English Language Learner students or a larger percentage of English Language Learner students, and that would fall into the Brandon Elementary zone and what is going to be the new elementary attendance zone. So if we put them at Fred Assam Elementary in terms of having a centralized programmatic location, we would be moving two sections of kids out of their neighborhood school concept and out of their zone into a different zone. So at the end of the day, having taken a look at all of that, certainly in the best interest of our kids to operate two programs, it will result in additional staffing, which we are working through at the moment as we prepare for our staffing recommendation for next year. So with that being said, this would be the recommended 21-22 elementary boundary lines for reference purposes. To start, I'm going to comment specifically on the purple, which is the new elementary zone. This section here, the black line, is Holly or Rice Street, however you want to classify Holly or Rice. We run our boundary, splitting the difference between Six Mile Road, which is right here, and ultimately Veterans Parkway, which is right along here. So we come south, splitting the difference between Six Mile Road and Veterans Parkway. What that does is that allows all of the new growth that occurs on the east and west of Veterans Parkway, north of Madison Street, to be absorbed into our new elementary school. It also allows those that have established acreages, I'm going to use the term acreages, along Madison Street to about, there's a section line that runs there, all of those individuals have the ability to stay at Fred Assam. In addition, when we get to Madison Street, we run west on Madison, over to Veterans Parkway specifically, and then south to 10th Street. And what that does, that does really two things. That ensures that we capture all of the new growth that is occurring on the west side of Veterans Parkway, down to 10th Street. All of the new growth there moves to the new elementary school. And on the east side of Veterans Parkway, what that does is that allows us to maintain that neighborhood concept to the greatest extent possible. So if you bend down or around there in the last, what I would say is, few months, you can see extensive development that is occurring north of 10th Street. So this will all be, or much of it will be residential, so that means that neighborhood concept here for the Fred Assam Elementary School. Then at 10th Street, we run to the east on 10th Street, all the way to Highway 11, and then jog ever so slightly north and go straight across to the Minnesota Line, excuse me, on 266th Street. So all of the new growth, which if you overlay, something that's really interesting, I can't remember the name of the gentleman from Fred Assam, parent representative who commented on it. When you overlay the city of Sioux Falls growth map and where there are current developments, it's really all in and along and aligned to our, or much of it is in and aligned to our new elementary zone. So we would imagine that we will see substantial residential growth, when I say residential, I mean new residential growth within this respective area. This ultimately impacts the Valley Springs Elementary Zone, and what this does is this aligns specifically to BV Vision 2040 for when we build an east-side elementary and come down with the boundary line on McCarty. But I'll comment that when I get to that. Any specific questions on the proposed boundary lines for next year? Okay? And then this, obviously, high level, 20 years down the road, so you can get an idea of how we manage growth, et cetera. If you're looking at it in an incremental situation, I would tell you that very likely the next elementary that you'll need to build based on growth and capacity will be an east-side elementary. When an east-side elementary is built, you can again see that this established boundary line for our new elementary school does not change. The real change is on the McCarty Road. The boundary line comes down the McCarty Road, ultimately alleviating capacity out of Robert Bennett Elementary, and moving those kids all located within this section to the east-side elementary, as well as those 100 students from Valley Springs will then go to the multi-section elementary in the new building on the east side. That's very important as we plan to manage our high school capacity and operate a high school STEM academy, career academy, some sort of innovative programming on our Valley Springs land site. So that tells you that's an east-side elementary. The west-side elementary, which we have land for, we prepared recently last year, is located west of Veterans Parkway and north of Madison, so between Madison and Maple. Help, what's the name? Nakamas, thank you. The Nakamas Farm, just south of the current Nakamas Farm on the top of the hill, is where this land is located. And I would just say that when we look at this, whether it's 10, 12, 13, 15 years, when this happens, you can see that the impact on your south elementary or your new zone is really pretty minimal in the fact that you just take it 10th Street north. And then this also impacts our Brandon Elementary zone, and we pull our northwest corner of our district to this west elementary, and that's based on infrastructure and the roads and the timeliness of getting to the new building, et cetera. So with that being said, we have upcoming communications. We'll send an update to all of our families once the boundary lines are formally approved, send a postal letter to those families that are impacted by the change, and then there will be a family response necessary for them, which will be outlined within the letter that we send. Questions?
Jared, I've got one. On the 2040 vision boundary, as it looks like Highway 11 is pretty much the divider till you get to McCarty Park?
Uh huh.
Okay. I mean, I'm familiar with this area. Why didn't the committee keep Highway 11 the dividing line? Because east of Highway 11, basically that is flood plain and very few residents on McCarty Park Road. Why didn't you just, I guess my question is, why didn't you just leave Highway 11 the boundary?
Good question, great question, actually. And I would note, if we need to change these in 20 years, we will. But what I would say is when we had our original conversation and we took Highway 11, right here is what you're talking about, right? So there are a handful, I mean, I guess they're not very many, but there are a handful of residents that live on the east side of Highway 11. And my really bad night eye could probably hit the school. So we thought that it was a minimal number of families that would still be included as far as capacity goes, but they're in really close proximity to the school, so that's why we went McCarty Road. They could see it, and it wasn't going to be a substantial number, if that makes sense. But understand where you're at.
I guess I got a question, but how do you determine the location of the new schools? Were you approached by Nakamas? Were you approached by Nakamas', or how did you determine that's the best location? I mean, look, so much more to the northwest.
Sure. Great question. What I'd tell you is we are continually looking for and evaluating potential land sites for schools. We did not purchase from the Nakamas', that's important to note. We purchased from, what's the name of the group? It was Joel Deister was the representative for the group. Oh, it's escaping me. Anyway, more of the story is we look at future growth within the district, projected future growth within the district based on our respective municipalities, identify areas that fit for a school with the municipality's long-range land usage plan, and then ultimately, we just go to work. Evaluate, see what we can find, try to buy it a decade or so ahead of time before the land prices are too high. Fair. Does that answer your question, though?
Any other questions on this topic? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the 2021-2022 elementary boundary line recommendation as presented, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Three items under consent approval under general business. I would entertain a motion to approve items three through five, please.
I'll move.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Personnel, we have five items for consent approval. I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Number six is an information only for your review. Under communication, under central office, there are some building permit applications if you're interested in reviewing those, and also under board of education, there are a couple of thank you notes from a couple of families. So if you would like to review those also, please. At this time, are there any formal board reports that anyone would like to report on?
Renee, I'll do a couple. I'll try to keep it quick. I know we've been at it a while. Safety committee meeting a week or so ago, couple of high points to hit, and that committee includes the chief of police, school resource officer, administrators from the district, and so forth. Conversation around the Stop the Bleed training that the entire district received and was well-received. Also, there was a tabletop training, if you will, because obviously, in COVID times, it's difficult to do things other ways, that was coordinated. I believe Homeland Security was involved, maybe, but FBI certainly was involved as well, and we thank the chief for helping with that and the training. But in dealing with an active shooter, so it's tabletop conversation, a scenario was laid out, this happens, now what do you do? And then they go around the room and they make their decisions. What was their protocol? How did they do? What should they have done? Those kinds of things. People that observed the training, observed that exercise of our staff was impressed with the performance of the team that put that together. And I would say that that's, Mark Sloughway guides that team, and that team has been working for a long time on things like relocation of kids, you know, where do you go? And what's the procedure for picking up kids and all of those kinds of things. And everybody hopes, you know, that nothing happens, but you need to be prepared. There are all sorts of other kinds of situations, too, you know, when do you lock down? When do you stay put? When do you do all those kinds of things? And our staff is continually trained on that. Our administrators are continually learning what the best and latest ideas are and so forth. So kudos to Mark, to that staff, and thanks to all of those people from the outside that help us with that so we can keep our kids safe. I don't have much to say in regards to the whole buildings and grounds, because I think Jared has talked a lot about that, but just FYI, the trigger for the high school has been hit, so that means that we start a very high-level planning. This is not something that's going to be turned around in six months or a year or whatever, then all of a sudden, you're going to see an addition onto the high school. It's going to take longer than that. But where's the best place to put it? What should be included in that addition? Are we going to move some things around the buildings? All sorts of conversations at this point, like there would be with any other building project. And so when there's more information to share, we'll share it. But at this point in time, just know the trigger's been hit, and that means the conversation starts. That's enough for me.
Anyone else?
From the activities point of view, more of a huge congratulations to our football team, and I have more of a question if you want to address for the public. Obviously, a lot of people want to, or they're wondering if there's more capacity, do more people get to go? Who gets tickets? If you want to address that for the public.
So as I understand it, ticket sales are open to the public. So there is no limited attendance criteria in terms of who can or can't go. I think it's just a matter of, you can go if there's tickets available. My understanding is that parents of the participants and high school students have had tickets made available to them through a mechanism of a password of some sort, I don't know, but they've worked through that process, and now tickets will go on sale to the general public. I believe they were supposed to go on sale this evening, as I understand it, but they did have a little hiccup with their ticket sale process. So long story short, the public can go. If you would like information regarding ticket sales, it is on our high school webpage. Just click on state football championship ticket information, and you can find out how to purchase your tickets. Go links.
Anyone else? Hearing none, that takes us to the end of our agenda. I would entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And enjoy the weather. Welcome to winter. Oh, okay, welcome to spring. I'm confused, so is everybody else. Have a good night.